Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, Howard County Board of Commissioners. Renounce this.
All right, thank you everybody for coming. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by prayer.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody please stay standing for prayer. Your heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together and do the work of the citizens of Howard County. We thank you for the good turnout we got tonight and people interested in what the county is doing and what government's got going on. We come to you today with a little heavy heart. We lost Mr. Papasek that did over thirty-five years on the county council and really was truly a guy that cared about the citizens of Howard County and the department and worked hard for all of Howard County. So would you be with his family, watch over them, and just give them peace at this time of their loss? We also ask you to provide peace. The world is in chaos right now, and the Middle East especially, Lord. We just ask that you would watch over that region and put your hand on that region and help make wise decisions for those leaders and help them to do the right things. And we just ask and pray for the people of Israel and have your hand on them as well. We thank you for this county that we live in. We thank you for this state. We thank you for this great country that we live in. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Well, thank you everyone for coming. If you will bear with us as we deviate from our normal meeting this evening, we have some special guests with us this evening that we've asked to join us. And it's a special occasion as we get to honor a couple of people who gave countless hours of volunteer to Howard Haven. And you know, without volunteer hours, a lot of things we could not get accomplished. So I'm going to ask Jennifer if you'd come up to the mic and tell us a little bit about it, and then I will follow up with that.
Yes, we have two very special people to recognize today. Bob Kroll has been a Howard Haven volunteer since 2006.
He didn't know about this, by the way.
Tell him. Tell him what looked on his face.
We did it.
Yeah, we did it.
If anybody don't know Bob, he has served as the president of Friends of Howard Haven since 2006. I first met Bob when his brother was a resident at Howard Haven. Through the years, he has managed to get numerous grants for some of the needs of Howard Haven, just to name a few, the walk-in freezer, the canopy over the front walkway, and the enclosed porches. Bob coordinated with the Kokomo Career Center for the kids to build our gazebo. Not only was it a learning tool for the kids, but it benefits a home in ways that would not be possible without his help. He coordinates an annual cleanup with the Friends of Howard Haven to keep our outside grounds looking great. Bobby came in one Saturday recently to help Dave Lasias assemble a cabinet, which we needed in our office. It had a lot of pieces, like a hundred screws, different sizes of screws. But Bob and Dave worked two hours getting it assembled, and it turned out great. The Friends of Howard Haven came through again. Bob is a great asset, and we're so thankful for his dedication. And my second volunteer is Melinda Wright, who happens to be my mother. She is not only a great cook, but also a fantastic organizer. Over the past twenty years, she has cooked so many meals for the residents and really has done a wonderful job, especially on the holiday dinners from Easter feast to Mother Day teas to Thanksgiving and Christmas spreads. They were all so special and absolutely delicious. Her culinary skills also include many county council dinners, which brought many raves. But let her out of the kitchen, and she's a whirlwind at organizing, cleaning up not only the offices, but any resident room that becomes available. It doesn't take her long to restore that beautiful living area for a new resident. Ever since she retired, she has put her heart into making Howard Haven a loving home. She has been my rock, my best friend, and has worked next to me for twenty years. She's always been giving unselfishly to others and wanting nothing in return. That is why I love her. I just want to express my gratitude to both of you for all that you've done for Howard Haven and wish the best for both for the years to come.
So I'm going to ask both of you to come up front here so I can embarrass you.
How are you?
Forever.
You're sitting there. Let me get this.
Okay.
So I've had the great pleasure of working with both of these individuals. You know, when you're in a meeting with Bob, it's like, what more can we do? What more can we do? What more can we get done? You know, is always wanting to do more for Howard Haven. Very organized and just go, go, go. I never get that feeling when I'm working with Melinda because I'm always eating. Because she is, she creates the most exorbitant amount of food, great creations. When you go out to Howard Haven, the decoration, the food that she prepares for residents is just astounding. It's amazing. So you know, the commissioners, we wanted to call you guys up here and just really tell you how much we appreciate everything that you guys do. It's truly amazing the amount of volunteer hours that both of you put forward. And we couldn't do it without you. So you are truly amazing. So we wanted to get you a little something to show how much we appreciate. So I'm going to let both of you open this, and this is just something that we wanted to get you. So go ahead and open it so everybody can see it. It's something from local creation, an op lesson glass out here in Kokomo.
I have my name on the reading list to get in, though. I'm going to get stuck in here.
So I'm going to take good care of you. What it says, it's got Bob's name on there, Howard County, in recognition of eighteen years of service to Howard Haven.
Thank you very much. This was not a surprise. Well, of course she is. It's kind of a surprise, to be honest with you. I was not expecting this. I had no idea why Jennifer asked me to come here, but I just do what she tells me.
Fifth one.
And so I appreciate this. I look forward to many more years helping in Howard Haven.
Melinda.
It was a real dream for me to be able to help them and to do what I could, give them another chance to succeed. I have many of our Friends of Howard Haven people here today, and I want to thank them for coming because they, I don't do this by myself, believe me. It's very close. They are my rock. They do what I suggest we do. Sometimes they do it, sometimes we don't, but that's okay. But most of the time they do. Appreciate them all being here today. Thank you very much. About it.
I just want to say thank you. I'm really honored. I'm kind of emotional. You just take a group of people that's not related and you turn it, okay, and that's what lives in Howard Haven. Don't have any families, but residents, they live.
Good job.
Thanks, sir. Good job.
Thank you, everyone, for letting us do that. Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Melinda, for everything you do for us out of Howard Haven. It's an amazing place out there. Thank you, Jennifer, for all you do out there as well.
Definitely.
So we certainly appreciate it.
Real quickly, while you're saying that, my church group went there a few weeks ago. We played bingo with them and some things. That was, that was, it was actually very, it was fun. It was a lot of fun. But, and I give Jennifer the credit for this, the staff that was there that night, you could tell how much they cared about the residents. And I give you credit because the people there are cared for because of your attitude and the way you care for them and the way you lead that. So I know that they're well taken care of and people care. That was just a, everybody in our group said, man, the lady that was there, she really genuinely loved and cared on those people. So that was awesome.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. All right, moving on, approval of previous meeting minutes.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those minutes are approved. Please make sure we get these signed. Moving on, departmental business and reports. Maintenance Department, Mr. Stone Street.
Good afternoon. Two weeks ago, we, I made a request, see if you would like to purchase some equipment for their Howard County jail. This is HVAC equipment, heat pumps, dedicated outdoor air systems or makeup air systems, and also two boilers, two boilers. Plus, one more thing would be a fill capacity, additional fill capacity for the cooling tower, seventeen hundred dollars. The total price came to eight hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Oh, no, excuse me, that was just for the heat pumps. The total price came to eight sixty-eight seven ten for the heat pumps, then twenty-four eight fifty for the additional pumps, the VFD, their variable frequency drive pumps for the new system, and then the additional fill. I don't have the total sitting here right in front of me for all of that. But that did include the condensing, okay, yeah. Eight sixty-eight seven ten for the boilers and also the heat pumps and the DOAS units, and then additional twenty-four eight fifty for the the dry pumps and the fill capacity for the cooling tower. I don't know if you guys have any additional questions or concerns about this. And we tabled it last meeting, and I was, I'm here to ask for any recommendations you may have.
Yeah, I had asked to table it because I was trying to get some more research and some different things. And then I did have a nice conversation with Bill. We did some things. And you said last time that we could buy these in different ways. We could buy twenty, we could, I'm going to make a, I would make a motion that we buy thirty-five of them to get it started and get the program started. I would ask that somebody from Sheriff's Department and the Maintenance Department talk to Irish Mechanical, they've been our, the contractor out there for the last few years, and see if they have any records of the most current heat pumps that have been replaced in the last five years, which what I was asking Mr. Stone Street. I'm not sure that I, that it's his responsibility, maybe as much more it would be as the people, the maintenance out there. So they may be able to find something out, they may not. But I would recommend that we start with thirty-five of the units and go that way. That would be my motion.
Is that about fifty percent?
Thirty-five is roughly fifty percent of the heat pumps. There's also the makeup air units that would be of a pretty large importance because the makeup areas, they run and they cool or condition the spaces the heat pumps are working in. So they reduce the load on those systems. The boilers are condensing boilers, so the ones we have now are non-condensing, which means they have to run at a hundred and sixty degrees minimum all the time. The condensing boilers, you can turn the temperatures down on those, and you can run them at eighty-five degrees if you wish. The one issue that may come up by doing half is, and I'm sorry, I just got off the mower, you know, twenty minutes before it was made. The variable frequency drive pumps are needed for the newer systems because they operate at a on-off operation according to what their needs are. They actually, it's an energy requirement now to shut the loop, to isolate that unit from the loop so that loop's not beating it constantly. I don't know how that would play in, having old and new in place at the same time. I would have to research that. Also, there's three different units that we're bidding, so the price would fluctuate according to what unit you would actually be replacing if you just did a partial replacement. So there's a lot of variables to that. I think if that's the way everyone would like to go, we should table it and discuss it, or I can work on some numbers. I can, as far as Irish is concerned, we've had two different technicians there over the years that work for Irish. We've had Benchmark in there for several years, doing several replacements as well.
But Irish has been there at least the last...
Irish has been there quite a while. I don't know if they're going to have records of what they've done as far as, we have hours, and they have descriptions, and then, those are old measurements. Generally, it's a reactionary job to replace a compressor out there. We mark the individual units when we do that. We mark them when we replace the mixing valve, or excuse me, the TXV, or the compressor. We generally don't mark if we replace the contactor, that's kind of like preventative maintenance or a capacitor.
I would amend my motion then to the fact that if, if it can't be done that way to, that we had to purchase all, then that's what we would do. But if we can start with the half, I would still like to do it that way.
Absolutely.
Okay, what's, what's your amended motion?
The amended motion would be to meet with who you have to ask.
I would have to get with the engineer that's kind of looking over us on this, McClay Davis, and he works for Envelope Group.
So are you withdrawing your motion?
I'd still like to do half, but if they can't, then I'm okay with doing the full project after he speaks with the engineer. I think, I think that's clear.
I guess I'm trying to figure out how we put that into a motion. So.
I guess, you know, is, is, is what I've said was before, we're spending almost two million dollars, and I'm not blaming anybody.
It's got to be a big one, yes.
It's a two million dollar deal on a jail that's thirty-seven years old, and we've got other issues as well.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, this is, I guess.
We could table it.
I guess I'll, I'll pull my, I'll pull my motion if you want to do the research. I guess that would be the easier way, and come back until, I hate to make you keep coming to the meeting. If you come to the meeting, I'll pull the motion and table it until we get the full information.
I'd rather do that, Bill, than you come back and say, we either need them all, or we can do half.
Absolutely. And we'd have to strategize exactly what ones we'd be replacing and go from there.
Okay. Brad, you okay with that?
Yeah. And I know it's a different refrigerant, and that may be an issue.
Refrigerants laws and codes change practically daily, and it depends a lot on the politics. So you got to go with what you think would be best. This R four fifty-four is a safe refrigerant, but it is flammable. So it's a much cheaper refrigerant to have in your equipment because the pressures are reduced. It's easier for the technician to work on it. They can make it illegal next week. You just never know.
I appreciate all your work on it, Bill. I know you've been working hard on it.
Please come back to us and give us a definitive answer. We need to buy all, we can buy half, and you know what works.
Absolutely, I'll do that.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, Highway Department, Amber Tool.
First, I wanted to thank Bill for his work on our barn that we were able to re-sign and re-roof. So thank you. Yes, it does look very good. So thank you and your guys. And thank you guys for allowing him to do that because when we took off the siding and the roof, we realized that there was quite a few support posts that were not supporting anything. So it was a very timely maintenance task that saved us the entire building. So we were able to augment that and keep it, and it looks very, very good. So thank you for allowing him to do that. I have two items on my, on the agenda. The first one being Community Crossings, our 2024 dash one resurfacing project. So we were awarded both of the projects that we submitted for, for Community Crossings, and we were, we received our full, almost million and a half that we requested. So we are very excited for that. So this is the first of two projects. This is our big one. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, we're, we're happy to see that, that we got both projects. This is the first of two. So this is our resurfacing project. We want to go ahead and advertise for the resurfacing of our county roads. And so this would be advertised now, and then they would be due back May sixth at the next commissioner's meeting, and then we would take those under advisement at that point. So we'd like to ask permission to go ahead and advertise that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then my second item is a supplemental agreement to an on-call for professional services that we have with USI Consultants. The original on-call agreement was done in May of 2021 for twenty-five thousand, and we would like to do a supplemental agreement for thirty thousand that would take us into December of 2025. So this is used for any kind of on-call issues that we have, if I need something designed super quick or have a question that they can sort of help me with, with additional technologies that they've got on hand, that helps us do things a lot quicker. So I would ask that we go ahead and sign the supplemental agreement for thirty thousand dollars.
Do you agree with the request? Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Amber. I got one question for you. I know I always ask you about
No problem.
Twenty-six.
Yes.
I know that they just, they shut it down again. Did they contact you or anything?
They have not, no. It is technically not in our county, although the detour is through our county, so I don't necessarily get information.
I've had, I don't know, three, five phone calls about it, and they say, no, they just shut it down one day.
Yes.
And completely closed it, and people were like, House Committee didn't give us notice. Well, first of all, it's a state highway, so it's not ours.
Right.
They don't like that when you tell them that. And then secondly, there's like, can you put some kind of notice out? I, I said, I'm sure if Amber would have known, she would have.
Yes.
So, okay.
We'll go ahead and post it on our Facebook page. I will contact the people that I have in contact with and see if I can get some information as far as duration.
Yeah.
And when that's going to be open, or at least, you know, partially opened, and report back as quick as I can.
Do you know what they're doing?
They are finishing the project that was supposed to finish last fall. There were some, as I understand, there were some maybe design issues, some supply issues. There was quite a few issues going on. That was a three-year project. That was the third year of that project, and it just, they couldn't get it across the line. So they were able to kind of open it, so traffic was able to use it over the winter.
We don't, we don't know if it was open or not. The barricades were down.
Right.
They were moved to the side of the road, and people were using it, but I don't know if it was open or not.
The official detour was still posted. They were trying to keep semi-traffic and threw traffic off of it, but I do know that they have to put the final surface layer on. There are some other, you know, kind of tidy up things that they do need to do. So hopefully it won't take very long.
They do, you said, I know you said it wasn't in Howard County. They do close the road at eight seventy west.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, they did.
But that's just because they're doing something further down.
They are right at our county line border is where the construction starts. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, congratulations on the getting the money too.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, US thirty-one study.
Thank you so much. My name is Cassidy Hunter, and I'm the Communications Manager for the Propel US Thirty-One South Study. I'm joined today by my colleague, Dan Miller. The purpose of today's briefing is to introduce you to the draft Level Two screening report and to introduce you and familiarize you with some resources to help you work through that information. So we were here last fall, and we were just about to get, begin the alternatives analysis process, and that started with the universe of alternatives. And at that phase of the study, we were really looking at all of the potential solutions that could meet the needs that we had identified in the study area. So the universe of alternatives was the first step in a three-step evaluation process, and now we were, are at the second level of that development process. So that's called creatively, Level Two. So given the size and complexity of the US Thirty-One South Study area, there are three levels of screening for potential improvements. And after each screening, there will be a smaller number of alternatives, except the level of detail will be increased at each level with those alternatives. So during the universe of alternative screening process, we were looking at fifty-five improvement concepts that were identified that could address the issues and desired outcomes in the study area. And that included a variety of things such as location-specific roadway lighting or extended turn lanes to large-scale projects like added turn, added travel lanes, excuse me. So the purpose of the Level Two screening is to qualitatively evaluate location-specific improvements for reasonability and potential impacts. So the improvements considered in the Level Two screening were previously identified in the alternatives analysis phase. In the Level Two screening, fourteen potential solutions were identified as primary and complementary content, concepts, and they were evaluated at the primary intersections in the US Thirty-One South Study area. So a primary intersection are locations where US Thirty-One interacts with a roadway that is, that is designated as a major collector or hire. And those, and additionally, there were roadways that we identified in our outreach with stakeholders that were also considered as primary intersections. And we looked at things like access points for schools, for emergency service providers, for agricultural equipment. So the alternatives selected at the primary intersections will influence what can be constructed upstream and downstream of those intersections and thus really create the building blocks for the Level Three screening. So the Level Two screening process included four steps on how we got there. So first was a decision tree, and really this was a standardized set of questions that we used at every single intersection that, so we applied that consistently. And then we did a traffic level planning operations analysis to see if the alternatives would create poor, you know, travel operations, and if they did, then they were no longer considered for part of our study. The third step was a qualitative evaluation matrix that assessed several factors, including, did these meet the purpose and need that we had established? What were the anticipated social, economic, and environmental impacts? And what was the relative cost? So multiple improvements at this stage were dismissed from further consideration because they, you know, had, oops, excuse me, had a higher impact than others. So, sorry, I keep. And then we have the conceptual footprint. And what that is, a really high-level look at the impacts or the area of disturbance that each concept has. And those that had, you know, really high impacts were screened out for further consideration. So these are the five primary concepts that made it through the Level Two screening. So the first is access management, and access management are strategies that control and optimize the way vehicles and pedestrians enter, exit, and cross the roadway. You might, these are access points, or they are conflict points, and sometimes those include roadway or driveway connections. Another improvement concept considered was unsignalized intersection improvements. Existing intersection, intersections would be reconfigured to improve safety and efficiency. There are several ways that this could be done, including innovative intersection types such as reduced conflict intersections, roundabouts, and great T intersections. On the other hand, it could also include things like adding or extending turn lanes. The next concept that we considered were crossroad and, gosh darn it, I'm so sorry. It's not playing nice with me today. Were crossroad overpasses and underpasses, which is where the intersecting roadways obviously are physically separated from the crossroads, and that would make mainline traffic free-flowing. This would improve safety by reducing safety by reducing conflict points, however, access would be reduced because the connection between the highway and the crossroad would be eliminated. Finally, we considered the conversion of at-grade intercheck, interchanges to, uh, at-grade intersections to interchanges. In this concept, at-grade intersections would be modified to separate traffic flow from the major roadways from the crossroad. This would improve safety by reducing the overall number of conflict points. However, again, access would be reduced because the, uh, highway and the crossroad would be eliminated. Finally, in the Universe of Alternatives memo, we talked about free-flow facilities, and those were identified as a primary concept for the US 31 South Study area. A free-flow facility is when roadway users don't have to stop, but there are many varieties of that, including, uh, freeway, highway, or, um, whether there would be intermittent stops. That will be looked at in greater detail in the Level 3 screening. That's the longest one, I promise. So for the US 31 South Study area, the Level 2 re, report focused on these primary intersections. Again, the primary intersections have a crossroad classified as a major collector or higher, so that's the highest classification of non-interstate roadway. It's important to note that US 31 and County Road 400 North intersection was added as a primary intersection because of its, uh, proximity to Pipe Creek Elementary School, and that was a direct result of a stakeholder feedback that we received. So this slide shows the range of improvement alternatives that pass the Level 2 screening, and these con, concepts will define how the study area operates, and whether it provides for a free-flow, uh, condition or requires intermittent stops. So we just went through the five primary concepts that were carried forward. Underneath the yellow are the complimentary concepts. Uh, though, they were deli, developed, um, in, to, um, work in hand with a primary concept so that they could include, um, benefits at some specific locations, and when coupled with a primary, um, concept, could help address identified needs or a specific need at a specific intersection. So I know on this list you might see, um, things that you like and things that you don't like, and I, that's very understandable. Um, so that this is a robust and thorough study, we have taken a look at all potential options, and these are what have come through the Level 2 screening. It's important that, you know, the, uh, stakeholders still give us their feedback based on these, um, concepts that are here. Um, it's also important to note that any intersection alternative carried forward to the next level must meet to some extent the identified needs that, that we've already put forward. Um, this summary table is found on page 137 of our report that is now online. So, the draft Level 2 screening report was released on March 27th, and it's posted along, uh, with a comment form on our website. I mentioned page 137, so it's a very lengthy and technical document, so we've tried to come up with ways to take that information and make it a little bit more digestible. And so what you see here is a screenshot of the interactive map that we've created on our website. Uh, you can go to this page, and at the bottom, it's very small in the bottom, those blue buttons, you can pick the US 31 South Study area. That will then allow you to drill further down into, it, whether it's, uh, Tipton County, Howard County, Miami County, and look at each of the intersections, um, in the study area that we looked at. You can see all of the concepts that were carried forward, uh, their conceptual footprints. We have little two-minute videos that give a high-level look at the environmental impacts, whether there are communities of concern in the area. Um, and then it walks you through each of the concepts that we are, that have made it through the Level 3 screening so that you can really see, you know, what an interchange, or what, um, a roundabout, or what a reduced conflict intersection might look like, um, in a specific location. So in addition to being available on our website, hard copies of that report are at, um, locations in the study area, both at the, uh, both Kokomo branches have a hard copy and, um, comment forms. And we are requesting that comments be made by April 30th. After we take that public comment, we will put out a final, um, draft, or a final version of this report, and then we will begin working on Level 3. And the goal of the Level 3 screening is to identify a recommended set of reasonable alternatives that at the end of the study will be presented to Endot for consideration. This shows you where Dan and I will be the rest of this month, and past May, we will be, um, all over the counties doing outreach and trying to meet residents where they are and talking about the study and interacting with them that way.
We'll be busy.
We are gonna be busy. We already started talking about fair food just earlier this, this morning, so we're prepping already, we're thinking about it. Um, so with that, I know that was, um, a really quick boiled-down version of what's other presentations that we have given related to this information. Um, I don't want to take up all of your time. I appreciate everything that, all the time that you've given me today. Happy to take any comments and questions if you have them.
I kept wondering why the, uh, overpass down by the John Deere dealership, I learned the National Guard was going in there. Then it all made sense.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate your time. If you ever have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are ready for claims and reports, salary claims.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those are accepted. Ready for payroll expense?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. We are ready for operating claims.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Any claims to ratify?
None.
Any monthly report?
I have the Treasurers monthly report, month ending to 29th of '24.
We have marched out, passed, accepted. Any grants?
None.
Mr. Wilson?
I have a few matters tonight. First, uh, Baker-Tilly engagement letter agreement related to services that Baker-Tilly has agreed to provide to the county with respect to budgeting and financial consultants. He's one signature in two different places in there.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, um, your permission to sign this as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have, back in 1988, the city of Kokomo and the county entered into a, an interlocal agreement for cooperative action that basically covers various projects. There's been a third amendment to that agreement, which just allows Endot, as a member of the board, to have a proxy to vote at the meetings, and that's the only change to the agreement.
We reviewed this earlier. We just need to sign this then, right?
Yes.
Is there a motion? Do you accept this amendment?
Big motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, anything else?
Yes. Excuse me. Periodically, the county is required to submit an updated Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. Um, when various departments apply for grants, they need to have certification that we have an Equal Employment Opportunity Policy, and this is just a restatement of that policy that needs to be signed in a certification form that, uh, Mr. Dodd needs to sign as president.
Are you all in favor of accepting the Hired County Government Equal Employment Opportunity Plan?
Aye.
And next, as was discussed at a previous meeting, we have a contract with the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council that needs to be approved and signed.
All in favor of this, of approving this contract?
Aye.
That is approved.
And finally, I have drafted a resolution which opposes the diversion or exportation of water from the county for various pipeline projects. For your approval and signature.
I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution Number 2024 BCCR...
08.
Eight.
I need, I need to send it to the record.
You do not.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Wilson. I've had numerous people stop by my house, uh, give me calls about, they're really concerned about water being shipped out of Hired County.
Now, this, this resolution just expresses the viewpoint of the, of the board. Various communities have, uh, drafted and enacted various resolutions that just says, this is what our policy is on this.
You know, we realize, we can't stop the flow of water. Water is gonna flow where water flows, but we can, as you said, we can oppose that, or if you want.
Yes.
Want or not, we are.
And that's all I have, Steve.
Okay.
Yes, sign that one.
Mr. Gray, any commissioner issues?
Hmm, no, sir.
Mr. Repinsky?
Um, I think this is National Communications Week.
Oh, yes, sir.
I believe so, and I really would, uh, dispatchers like to speak on behalf of the Hired County dispatchers and, um, the job that they do. It's a very tough job, a very difficult job. I think we need to recognize them, that, for the work they do for Hired County and Kokomo, and, uh, it's, I would expect extremely stressful position to be in.
The ensign hero.
Yeah, very, very, very tough job, so I just would like to reach out and thank them for what they do.
Much appreciated what they do. Hey, are there public comments that would like to be made? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye.
We are adjourned.